And everybody, welcome to our special meeting. And we will start with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Please stand. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
My pledge of allegiance is that I am of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will have our board secretary, Letitia, take role to establish a quorum.
Thank you. President Craighead.
Here.
Member Benitez.
Present.
Member Lopez.
Present.
Member Miller.
Here.
Member Otto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And for public testimony, we have Ms. Nubia Flores.
Good afternoon. My name is Nubia Flores and I'm Associate Director of Long Beach Forward. I oversee and help support our parent work as well as Best Start Central Long Beach, part of the First Five Initiative focusing on early education. We are very dedicated to helping families support their students succeed in school and to help cultivate and increase parent engagement. We have programs like Retreatish that we collaborate with Neighborhood Association AOC 7 and Days Long Beach and local LBUSD schools. We also help support parent education and leadership development of parents, efforts that help them understand how to navigate LBUSD, how to support their students in school, and how to get involved in their school communities and how to advocate for their children. We have been following the efforts of LBUSD closely as it tries to expand more equitable practices across the district to help ensure that all students have access to a quality education. So much has been done and we have so much more to do. We at Long Beach Forward applaud your efforts to try to set goals that focus on student outcomes. We appreciate the conversations you've all had as you finalize your goals and appreciate all the information that you've shared. Thank you for having these discussions in public. They've been very enlightening. However, there are some questions and I hope they're answered as you continue to finalize. But one main question we still have is in Board Goal Three, for example, how did you determine to set the goal at 80 percent for Black and African-American students? How are you going to get to these numbers as you set these goals? And is this something that you can elaborate on? Again, we support your efforts as a board to center students and become much more focused on student outcomes. We will continue to follow your conversation so that we, as a community organization that works closely with parents and caregivers, can also help support in sharing this information with folks. Thank you.
Thank you. As we start our discussion on goals and guardrails, I think it's good to provide a little background information on this process. And the board started this process three years ago, I think it was three years ago in October. And we started with three board members who are currently not a part of the board, with Mr. Otto sitting in as kind of an introduction before he was seated as a board member. And so I want to thank you for that because you really didn't have to do that because you hadn't been sworn in yet, but you were a part of that process. So I wanted to acknowledge that.
Oh, yes, I did have to do that.
You did have to do that?
Yeah.
Well, good. I'm glad you feel that way. And I also want to acknowledge Felton, Dr. Felton Williams and John Meyer because they were in their final two months of serving and they put in the work. They were all for the premise that Mr. Kabel brought forward, which is that adult behavior affects student outcomes, that student outcomes change when adult behavior changes. And we took that to heart. And we thought, of course, that's something we want. So this process has been long and arduous and very well worth it because when it comes to affecting the outcome of our students, that's why we're all here, everybody in this room, and those watching, listening. That's why we do what we do. And I know, Dr. Benitez, you wanted to offer more context for this. I know we talked about this briefly. So what would you add to that conversation?
Thanks for getting us started, President Craighead. So just to build on that context, if we take action today, which in our agenda, we should take action on adopting goals today, it's important for our community to understand that this didn't just come about with a few board meetings or with a few insular conversations. So I remember vividly that meeting from almost three years ago, Madam Chair. I remember that we used an assessment tool where we all assessed our district at being at a zero using that metrics that A.J. and his team provided. And that by no way discredits all the wonderful work that our district did and continues to do since that point. But we did make an intentional decision at that point around two areas, Madam Chair. One is uplifting that our district is here, our school system exists to improve student outcomes. And the second, that our school board is supposed to uphold and represent the community's vision and values around those student outcomes through priorities and goals. So that was three years ago. We had many conversations since then. Since then, two of the members of our board has formally participated in the Council of Great City Schools cohort work around student outcomes-focused governance, myself, Mr. Otto. I'm hopeful that others of us, including our executive team, participate in those additional opportunities with that group and A.J. and his team, and that we also continue with ongoing coaching, right? Because the work doesn't end with just the adoption of goals and guardrails. So I just want to highlight a few of the things that were done as part of this process. We embarked on a series of community listening sessions. We embarked in collectively developing a database of community organizations, community partners, community stakeholders that we wanted to invite, to engage in participation in those community listening sessions. And there were three ways that we listened and that we took in community feedback and input. One was through those in-person sessions that we co-facilitated at different sites in our district. The second is that we also allowed for open-ended input. So at those sessions and through our various communications platforms, we gave opportunities for our community members, our community partners. And then we also reached out to get invited to ongoing community meetings with our community partners. I remember making those phone calls. I remember Mr. Otto calling me and saying, hey, have you been able to get a hold of so-and-so? So that if they were not able to attend in person, we could still get this information out. We could still come to their meetings and they could still provide those much-needed ideas around the vision for student success and the priorities and values that we would uphold that vision, community vision around student success. So we compiled a raw set of notes from all of those entry points. A.J. and his team summarized those and we produced a document that highlighted some of the key themes that came from those sessions. Right around the same time, we strategically decided to put a pause on those meetings because we embarked in a broader strategic planning process with the district. I remember, not this past August, two Augusts ago, we had a conversation right back there around how important community engagement would be for our strategic planning sessions. And we had thousands of data points that we intentionally left our questions open so that we could continue to track, document, report back on, and continue to improve our community engagement efforts. So we actually had over two years of community listening that took place. We were very intentional in making sure that student voice was raised through that strategic planning process. And again, we had ongoing updates, ongoing conversations. At the same time, we had a group. Mr. Miller and I began to have formal conversations with our superintendent, with my colleagues here on the board, around potential goal areas. We did assigned readings. Council of Great City Schools provided resources for us, tools, a book. I'm not going to do a shameless plug up here, A.J., you can do that yourself, to build our own capacity to not just synthesize community vision and priorities around student success, but to also be able to engage in critical conversation and be able to make sense of those themes that came out of both our board member community listening sessions and our district-wide strategic planning process. And then over the last four to six months, we've actually been deliberate in drawing down to then translating that vast amount of information from our community into goal areas. And I'm proud to say that we had very engaging conversations. It's not easy work. We asked for a lot of data from our superintendent and the team to help inform those conversations. We spent a half-day workshop. And then we followed up with an additional meeting where we had a chance to, in Spanish, we have a term, pulir. So when a diamond is rough, you polish it, right? So we had the makings of some very important goals and guardrails, I must add. And so we had some facilitated conversations and discussion with A.J. So I'm proud of our district. I'm proud of our executive team. I'm proud of our community first and foremost, including students, staff, educators, teachers, community partners, community members, parents, caregivers, friends, family, that throughout this entire process either came to school board meetings, we had thought exchanges, we had surveys, we built in community visioning to back-to-school nights in cafeterias, in auditoriums, Black Student Achievement Initiative events. And by no means am I trying to say that the work is done. I'm just highlighting the intentional effort that our district and our board and my colleagues have done to make sure that if we were going to launch into a process of adopting goals, that we would also build our capacity to make sure and hold ourselves accountable to those goals. And the way that we do as board members is that we are elected to uphold and represent community's vision around student success. And that's exactly what we're trying to uphold through the development of these goals and guardrails and, as importantly, through the development, if and when we approve our goals and guardrails, to the development of a monitoring calendar. I want to congratulate the team here that has provided us with a lot of data over the last 18 months. Almost at every school board meeting, at least at every month basis, we'll have an opportunity now to be more strategic around what kind of data we receive, what kind of questions we get answers for, and how we continuously monitor and improve those efforts around student success, namely in those four goals, draft goals that we have before us today. So Madam Chair, I just thought it was important for our community to know that we have been very intentional and we will continue to be very intentional because just as we asked our community to share their visions, their hopes, their dreams for student success in Long Beach, we want to be held accountable to make sure that we attain those visions, those dreams, those goals for who we're all here for today and its students in Long Beach Unified School District.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
President Craighead, may I just add a bit to the story as well, too? And I appreciate the circling around and retelling ourselves where we've been. It's an important story to tell. I want to add, and although it's some of the mechanics of this, I want to acknowledge a couple other things that have been done in service to where we're headed. And that is moving to a consent calendar in the agenda, which has also took a huge transition for you all to think differently, the commitment that you made to the study of your materials outside of the board day, asking questions and preparing for a consent calendar so that there was time and space on an agenda to talk more about student outcomes in a very focused way. Also, just to thank our team and you all for the grace that you gave us to practice what a monitoring calendar could be like with district goals. And so you got a very wide spread of data as we shared the kinds of things that we're monitoring on an ongoing basis and frankly, will continue to monitor. We brought that into the boardroom as a way to practice what it would be like to be talking about student outcomes and a monitoring calendar. And I appreciate, we had a lot of learning and actually, I think that's going to accelerate the development of an actual monitoring calendar for board goals and guardrails because we've had that practice and are able to use some of the lessons learned from that trial period to inform the way that we move forward with student outcome-focused governance. So thank you for that entire, for three years of story, and I really appreciate getting to this point. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, I wanted to just add an addendum to that, and that is that we started off trying to gauge what the community wanted and what their values were, what they were looking forward to. And I was in the middle of that process and in my humble opinion, it was a failure. And it was a failure because we didn't know exactly how to do it. We would have community meetings and the same people would show up at the meetings. And we learned some things. We learned how important it was. And by the way, I think in the entire planning process, getting the input from the community is the most important thing and the most difficult. And so it was very important for us to find ways to do that. And what happened, in my mind, was that we got this strategic planning process. Now, I've been involved in many strategic plans before, but this one was unique because it put an emphasis on getting that basic first information from the community and circling back to make sure that that was accurate and that people were invested in that. People go through a school district and they go to other places, but I was very confident by the end of our process that we had a good sense of what our community wanted, that we had established relationships. Long Beach is a very special place compared to many, many other places because people want to be involved and people, when given the opportunity, will be involved. And that's exactly what happened. And so we have a good foundation. And that foundation has got us to this next step, which is to say, okay, where do we go from here? And like Juan said, if you looked at the beginning of this, it says, how are you doing in terms of your student outcomes-focused governance? And we weren't doing very well because we didn't have any goals, we didn't have any guardrails, and we needed to put that together with a solid foundation. I think we've done that now. We are ready to start asking those harder questions and taking the steps necessary to make this a process that we can live with going forward and that the community feels that they trust us, that they say, okay, we're listening, we're working hard to get this done. And so we're on to this next step.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we've been working with A.J., Mr. Kabel, and he is an expert in board governance and how that relates to student outcomes. And he trains leaders, he's written a book. We are very fortunate to have him with us in person today. So I am going to now turn it over to you so that you can help us in the final leg of our journey. And hopefully, we can wrap this up with a bow. Doesn't complete our work, it just completes this step. And hopefully, we'll be ready to put that plan into action. So, Mr. Kabel.
It's good to be here with you today, and it most certainly doesn't complete your work. If I was going to say it completed anything, I'd say it complete, it's the end of the very beginning of the work. Like all, now that the easy part is done, the harder task of how do we actually reorganize an entire school system to be in alignment with the community's vision, the goals, in alignment with the community's values, the guardrails, that is a much harder journey. Most school systems fail to ever get really effective at that. And they fail for a variety of reasons, usually because the board fails to even bother to be clear about what the community's vision and values are. You've already avoided that step by being on this part. But that is the harder part of it, the creating alignment throughout the organization for how do we actually make sure that the resources of the organization are aligned with community's vision, aligned with community's values. That is a much harder job that's before you. That informs some of what you need to do today. In deciding what your goals and guardrails are going to be, the two primary sources of information have to be, what is the voice of the community and what is the current reality for students, particularly your high-need, high-leverage areas of student performance? And so as you've already heard from your colleagues, you all have gone through the process of systematically listening for the community's voice and then codifying that and then reviewing that over and over and over. You've received from your administration information about student performance. You've gone over that many times. But that is the task, is that the first thing you have to ask yourself this evening is, have we adequately listened for the vision values of the community? And that is a decision that only the board can collectively make. And have we adequately evaluated the needs of our students, the high-need, high-leverage areas of student performance? If the answer to both of those questions, the board feels is yes, then the time to proceed is upon you. If the board feels like the answer to those questions is no, then I'd say, stop and do your homework. So the first thing I want to do is I just want to check in before we get to the actual items on the table. Do you have evidence that the board has actually conducted listening for the community's vision and values? And do you have evidence that the board has actually reviewed data as it relates to the performance of your students? And it's an open question. Do you have evidence that the board has listened for and considered the vision and values of the community? And do you have evidence that the board has reviewed student performance data in advance of considering this decision?
I will answer on behalf of the board, and correct me because we are acting as one body, but yes, I believe we have listened. We have had the benefit of our visioning process and strategic planning, and we all participated in those listening sessions. We've all participated in the reports out. We've had publications on the results of those listening sessions. And I believe we have a very clear idea of what our community wants from our students. And then the second part, in evaluating the needs of our students, we have spent several meetings discussing the, I guess, the data and ramifications of what goes into these goals that we have whittled down to our top four priorities. And the evidence would be that we can go back and look at the recorded meetings to see the reports and presentations on the information supporting the goals that we have brought forward to today. So it's my opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we do have the evidence to go forward with these goals.
Over this period of time, which I think has been very helpful and somewhat unique, is we've worked very closely with our staff. We've listened to our staff, we've taken the information that they've given us and that's helped us come to the conclusions that we've been coming to. And it's been very satisfying, very appreciated that we've had that kind of working relationship. We're not up here telling you what we think. This has been a very collaborative process and I really want to thank the staff for all the work that they've put in on coming up with these goals and guardrails as a beginning of this process.
Thank you for that. Ms. Lopez, did you have something?
Yes, I think that there have been, you know, multiple meetings and we've heard from the community. I think we just have some data that has been requested and hopefully, tonight, we'll be able to get that data. And that's been requested, I requested data on our ELTELS for the last two meetings. And I hope that we do have that data to support the work that we're doing, to see if there's a need to include additional subgroups here in the goals. And so I hope that as this conversation continues, that data is provided to us.
Dr. Benitez.
Yes, in answering Mr. Kabel's two questions, so we have listened extensively. But I also want to iterate that we should continue listening and we can always listen more and listen better, right? So it doesn't take away our responsibility as a school district to listen more and listen better. In terms of data that we've received and has been presented, absolutely, and I highlighted the last 18 months. And again, that doesn't mean that we didn't get data prior to that, but I think the way that data was presented and the way that we were able to engage around the data was very different these last 18 months. Same thing I would say with our listening. We can always do better in terms of what we're presenting, in terms of data, and hopefully, when we anchor our conversations around the goals that are up for adoption tonight, that that will also improve. The way we share our data with our communities, I think we can do better. And, you know, I'm guilty of taking those deep technical dives around data, making our data accessible and understandable by our students and caregivers and families and communities. I think we can be better and do better. And so part of that calls for our community members, I'm glad we have some here today with us, to continue engaging with us, continue providing public comment, continue holding us accountable. But I think just as much a part of that is also owning our responsibility to better engage with our communities. So we've talked about issues around language justice, interpretation, translation, reaching out to communities that have either lost trust or that we need to rebuild trust with. We often hear from certain segments of our communities. It is our responsibility to make sure that if we're talking about listening and we're talking about sharing, that we reach out to those segments of our communities that have historically, for whatever reason, are not engaged. And so I think ownership on that front is also critical to highlight here today in the spirit of the two questions that Mr. Kabel asked us.
I'd like to add, just in terms of data, and perhaps this is a reminder, but just first of all, to amplify the gratitude to Brian, Dr. Veronica Matrigal, the research office staff, a couple of whom I see here, for the work that they have done behind the scenes, not just in anticipation of goals and guardrails, but prior to that. So as part of my evaluation process, you'll remember that at the end of June, I presented 71 slides that was broken out. And I want to say, I'm grateful to the research office. They were not slides that I did by myself. They supported me in providing those slides and all of the data related to the district goals that we were using to practice this idea of monitoring. But broken down by subgroup, broken down in many different ways that the board had requested all through last year, to give a final analysis that you all could then, again, use to add to the things that you were thinking about for goals for the district. So just want to amplify that gratitude and just, also just the reminder that that data existed as part of my year-end evaluation report and is something that we can continue to go back to because it also helps us in monitoring goals beyond the goals that are here for your consideration as goals and guardrails of the board.
Well, if it is a considered opinion of the board that the answer to these questions is yes, that the board has considered the community's voice, the board has considered data, then at that point, I would say you are, in fact, eligible to consider moving forward. If the considered answer to either of those questions is no, then my coaching to boards is that you need to hit the brakes and spend more time doing that work. It's important to note, and I think to your point, that several of you have made, that this is never indication that the work is complete or perfect. You must continue investing yourself in continuous engagement and listening with your community, all of which is laid out in the documents that we provided you about a more student outcomes-focused approach to governing, that you have to constantly have this conversation with your community, that that never ends, it doesn't stop. You don't represent you, you represent the community. And so you have an obligation to constantly be listening and to be, and... constantly be listening, and to be, and you have an obligation to be constantly evaluating the data. So, that doesn't end once you adopt your goals and guardrails. It really intensifies and gets very clarified and specific once you adopt your goals and guardrails. So, that brings us to the larger conversation of, are you prepared to consider adoption of your goals and guardrails? What I generally recommend is you start with the goals. The goals are the number one priority of the organization. In fact, in the materials you've received, it's the obligation of the board to not ever adopt a budget until the board is confident that the superintendent has made the goals the first priority for resource allocation. And so, the goals absolutely will describe, how do we spend our resources? How do we, what do we allocate more resources to? What do we allocate less? What things do we prioritize? And so, I want to start with the goals and walk through them one at a time to assess if there's any remaining question, and then proceed with a vote. One thing I'll say before we get into the voting part, is I get asked this question all the time. It's one of the most common questions I get, is, is it unhealthy for boards to vote in a non-unanimous fashion? I regularly get this question, and I know it comes from a good place. But the reality is, is unanimous vote is not, in my estimation, a sign of a healthy school board. I don't think it's necessarily unhealthy, but if I see nothing but unanimous votes all year long, I actually start to question, okay, either there is some significant process going on behind the scenes that isn't apparent to me, or I question, is the board doing its due diligence? And so, I've never been adherent of this idea that a board should push for unanimous votes on everything. In fact, I think disagreement is a beautiful thing. There are two and only two exceptions to that statement. The first is in the selection of your superintendent. Why do you think that my coaching to boards is to push for unanimity in the selection of a superintendent? Why do you think that's my coaching? When I don't recommend that you push for unanimous votes anywhere else, there are only two places where I recommend it, and one of those is selection of the superintendent. Why do you think that is?
With it being the one employee that the board governs, I think that it's important that we have a secret, a synchronized approach in regards to the support that we have for that person in leadership.
Well, for two reasons. One is that the nature of this process of being on a school board, I think, is to provide direction to the superintendent, who then executes the direction that we've given. And if we don't all believe and trust the superintendent, then it doesn't work. So, that's the first reason. The second reason is because our job isn't just to work with the superintendent, but to work to make the superintendent successful. And we can only do that by having a relationship that everybody agrees in, that this is the person we trust to carry out the direction that we've provided. And if you have dissenters from that, then you have a problem. And each of us has to have a plan to help our superintendent do the work that she has to do, because we only provide direction. So, that's my, the reasons why, I think.
As frustrating as it can be, it is inescapably clear to me that a non-unanimous selection for a superintendent is immediately setting the superintendent up to fail, that you are sending a very clear message to your organization that the board is not united in its support of this individual's leader, which leaves open the room for the staff to be in discernment around whether they subscribe to the leader's leadership as well. This is a meaningfully dangerous position to put your organization in. And so, if you get to the point, which hopefully you won't be having this conversation anytime soon, but if you get to the point where you're ever having a conversation about superintendent selection, and you are choosing to bring in someone, it is strongly the recommendation that you try to be in discernment such that you get to a unanimous vote. That is one of only two times that I recommend that the board push for a unanimous vote. The second time that I encourage boards to push for unanimous vote is when it comes to adoption of the goals. And I'm curious, of all the hundreds of votes you'll take over a five-year period, potentially thousands of votes you might take over a five-year period, why do you think the adoption of your goals is one of only two times when I recommend that the board push for unanimous decision?
I think part of it, AJ, is that if we're passing goals around five-year timelines, that it makes it really hard to then stick to those five goals, and then either through election or through changes in board members, we would potentially be changing goals on an ongoing basis, and it, in some ways, undoes the work of upholding and representing our community's vision and values around outcomes. So, we, in essence, should feel vested in and buy into goals that we're passing, because those should be the goals, if we're writing them correctly, that we would hold ourselves accountable to whether I am here as a board member or not.
I would, excuse me, I would just add to that, that each and every one of us has to support the goals that we choose, because going forward, this is the work of the district. The staff will be supporting us in these goals. We will be accountable to our communities, and so each one of us needs to be behind the goals in order to affect change and support student outcomes.
And so, with that piece of coaching, let's begin. Goal number one, I don't have it in front of me. Will someone read goal number one?
Okay. Goal number one has to do with reading proficiency. It says, the professor, excuse me, the percentage of grade three students who meet or exceed grade level standards on the state English Language Arts SBAC assessment will grow from 48% in June of 2023 to 70% by June of 2028.
Madam Chair, I recommend that you solicit a motion on goal number one.
Do we have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Do we have discussion?
We do have a question, actually a few. So, at what point will we do setbacks to see if we are on track to meet the numeric target? What's the plan to adjust? And will we receive data after each academic year to determine if the numeric targets need adjustment?
Interim goals are for, and that will, that will provide us with direction. And how do we do it? We take the information that we're given about how we're doing and take that into consideration.
Yeah, that is, that is absolutely correct, is that once the board has adopted a set of goals and guardrails, the next step in the process is to put together a monitoring calendar that describes exactly which of the goals and interim goals you'll be monitoring each month. You will create that calendar that will last out for the entire length of your goals. So, in this case, that calendar will describe every single month between today and June of 2028, and which goals are we monitoring during which month? So, you won't ever have to question, when will the data arrive, or when will we discuss this? It will be explicitly laid out in a calendar that says, month by month, every single month, between now and June 2028, here is exactly which data we'll be looking at on which month. Is that what you're asking about?
Yes. So, what I want to know is, if we're not meeting those targets, what's the plan to adjust? What's the plan to, you know, make any changes if those targets aren't being met?
Yeah, and that is the real work. When I said that today is, if anything, the end of the beginning, the real work is monitoring. In fact, the coaching is that, as a board, that you move to a position where you are spending 50% of your time each month monitoring progress towards your goals. 50%, think of all the time that you spend in this room together as a board. Now imagine a time where half of that time is spent monitoring progress each month, and the critical conversations of monitoring are exactly the conversations that you surface. What's, where are we at? How do we get here? What's working? What's not working? And what adjustments are we making? These are the critical conversations of monitoring, and it's a conversation that you will have month after month after month. It is not super exciting, or sexy, or flashy. This is just the hard blocking and tackling of what it is for a governing body to honor and support children, month in and month out, asking that same set of questions every month without fail.
Yeah, and I think it's impossible to say now, what we're going to do to fine tune or adjust how it is that we're doing until we have the data come in.
Yeah, you'll need to make that decision based on the data. That's correct. But that's also why you monitor every single month without fail, is because you need to be looking at the, because that, the data is what is informing what adjustments should or shouldn't be made. So, it's certainly not in order to make decisions in advance of the data. You go where the data leads.
Any further discussion? Dr. Benitez?
Yes, just a clarifying question, Madam Chair. So, I know how we arrived at the 48% starting percentage. That's because our SBAC scores for 22, 23 either met or exceeded at up to 48%. Just like to get our thinking as to how we arrived at the 70% goal, target goal.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm happy to get us started, and of course, I'll invite the soon-to-be officially Dr. Madrigal to jump in. We also have, I'll invite any of my colleagues, including research staff, to jump in. When we, we started with our June 2023 metric, in this case, it was 48%. And we looked at what we felt was a, an achievable, yet stretch goal, something that we can strive for, that is really going to push our system, but that we think is important for us to push our system to. So, whether we chose 70, or 71, or 69, that is probably not as relevant as we were looking for a target that would be, like I said, reasonable, yet stretching ourself as a system to attain. And we felt, looking at over the next several years, what was attainable and yet would push our system, we felt that 70% was an appropriate goal for goal one.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Goal one passes 5-0.
Goal two. The percentage of students in grades four through eight scoring at the not met achievement level in the prior year who met the scale score growth target on the state SBAC English Language Arts Assessment will increase from 28% in June of 2023 to 60% in June of 2028.
I think it's a good time to make a point of clarification here, because this is complicated to people that haven't been looking at it. The difference between proficiency and acceleration, and why?
Right before you answer that, I would encourage you to solicit a motion.
Pardon?
Madam Chair, I'd encourage you to solicit a motion for goal number two.
To pull the motion?
Well...
Oh, solicit a motion.
We're not in discussion yet, so someone has to move.
Excuse me.
I move to approve goal two.
Second.
Mr. Otto, you had a question?
Yep. Did you hear it?
I did. And again, I will get us started, but I will invite our team to jump in. So, you recall at the last, the last board meeting where we spoke about these draft goals, there was a conversation about, was goal two, the way it was written previously, was it acceleration and growth, or was it about achievement? And at that point, what we were looking at was the number of students who were far, two or more years below on I Ready, what number of those would increase to a higher level? And we, through conversation with Mr. Crable, we realized that that was actually an achievement level goal. So, the, our understanding from the board conversation that evening, we went back and analyzed kind of what the interests of the board seemed to be. And from a goal perspective, for students who were in grades four through eight, who were behind, far behind their grade level expectations on the SBAC, how might we set a goal where we would be monitoring students furthest behind on SBAC, and what type of growth are they making? And so, therefore, the goal that we identified was, we would, each year, and in 2028, we would look at students who in the previous year, in grades four through eight, students in the previous year had scored in the not met level on SBAC. That is the lowest band of performance on SBAC, that you could roughly correlate to the original conversation around two or more years below on I Ready. So, we looked at the lowest performing students on SBAC, those that were in the not met range. And what we would do is, we would say, if they were to make some accelerated growth over multiple years, so that they could attain grade level proficiency within three years, what might be that growth that they would have to make each year to eventually get to, back to grade level proficiency? So, through some great work with our research team, we were able to identify, we are able to identify a growth target for each student in that not met range, that if they were to achieve that growth target over three years, they would get back to meeting standards. And so, therefore, what we will do is analyze what percent of our students in the not met range are meeting this target that we have set for them, so that they can, over a three-year period, get back to grade level proficiency. So, it is a little complicated to explain, but it is something we feel confident that we can set goals for and monitor students at the individual school and student level.
I think for the, for the public, and even for me in this, I said, okay, the goal itself talks about the state SBAC, which is a measurement, but the interim goals talk about I Ready. Are we switching? And what's the significance of that, and why?
Yeah.
As I Ready as a measurement tool.
Absolutely. And Mr. Crable, feel free to jump in as well. But I, through this process, as I'm learning alongside all of you about this process of board goals and guardrails, I believe the understanding is that the metric we use for the summative goal should be different than the metric we use for the interim goals. So, since we're using SBAC here for our summative goal, we need to find something else that approximates performance on SBAC. And in this case, we believe that performance on I Ready, and especially for those students who are furthest behind, approximates what we would want to see on future SBAC growth as well. So, we will use I Ready growth as an interim measure towards our ultimate summative goal.
And people, that's understandable in the community, that we're switching, and we can tell them the reasons why, and that there's a reason behind it.
Yeah, if you're wanting to communicate this publicly, the way that I would generally communicate it is that SBAC is only knowable at the end of the year. And we want to have data that can help us make decisions if we need to pivot throughout the year. And so, waiting to only pivot once a year is a bad plan. And so, having the goal be based on end-of-year data, but the interim goals based on interim data that is available throughout the year allows us to actually pivot multiple times throughout the year. But you don't ever want to be in a, you ask any parent, would you like us to evaluate if we should make adjustments for your child's education once a year or multiple times per year? Those parents are going to be like, you need to pivot as often as you need to pivot. That's why having a different measure for the interims helps you, because otherwise, you'd be trapped into only making meaningful decisions once per year.
So, it's not just to make our meetings longer and get more towards that 50% goal, right?
Indeed. But hopefully, in fact, in some ways, it will help economize, because you'll actually get in the habit. The first, I'll just warn you, staff especially, buckle up. The first year is brutal. There's really no other way to describe it. Getting the organization in the habit of monitoring progress, and getting the organization in the habit of making modifications to what's happening in alignment with what that data is telling us, is a very challenging process, and it will run against and grate against the nerves of folks all throughout the organization, starting in this building and going out to every single campus you serve. It is a, the first year is always kind of brutal that way. But it's a righteous process. You want to be in a position to make routine decisions about how to pivot. You do not want to be in a position of only being able to do that once per year.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes, two thoughts, Madam Chair. First is appreciation for staff rewriting this goal as an accelerated growth goal. I know that took a lot of thought and effort and data analysis. Here's how I think about this, in terms of how it captures the spirit of... of, uh, the population of students that we wanted to explicitly target. Those students originally, as it was written, that were two or more years behind using our I-Ready, uh, assessments. And, and then how we think through, but grades four through eight. So, um, according to last year's, uh, S-BAC data, thirty percent of students last year in grade three, uh, did not meet grade level standards. Am I correct so far, Mr. Moskowitz? Uh, so, um, the boldness of this goal to me is reflected that each and every student in that thirty percent, let's say, has a, uh, growth, individual growth target for them to meet grade level standard, uh, right? So if someone, irrespective of how far, and I hate to use this deficit, uh, phrasing, but how far behind, uh, they are, uh, they have a target growth, uh, or a growth target that will get them to meet grade level standard. So what we're saying through this goal is that by the end of this timeline, sixty percent of the students that were formally in the not met category, according to that slide, will have met their, um, growth target, which in essence would put them at grade level. So two things come to mind here. One, we're still targeting those students that need the most attention, the most resources. But second, that we have the ability to pivot through the multiple assessment during the year, so we don't wait till the end of fourth grade or till the end of fifth grade. We can, uh, intervene before that. And that we're still, grades four through eight, targeting our highest, uh, priority students, which are those that have not met, all right? That may nearly meet by the following year or the following, next two years, but by the end of that measure, uh, they will, sixty percent of them will have met their target growth, uh, or their growth target. Is, is that how I'm understanding the, the goal here?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think you said it very well. The one thing I just want to be clear on is the growth target that we're setting for each student in that not met range, and they are, they're significantly behind grade level standards at that point if they're in the not met range. The growth target we're setting is that if they met that target over three years, they would get back to meeting standards.
Correct.
For the purpose of this goal, we're measuring in one year, did they meet their one-year goal? But, but most students are not going to go from not met to met in just one year.
Correct.
So it's a, it's a three-year target, and we're going to measure in each year, are sixty percent of them at least meeting that one-year target.
And, and thank you for that, Mr. Moskowitz. And again, I, I want to iterate here, each student presume, not all students are at the same or have the same growth target, right? Presumably, those students that are quote-unquote "most behind," uh, have to accelerate at a faster rate to get to grade level, right? So we're still looking at individual student performance here to get to the goal.
Absolutely. So you're right in that some students are in the not met range and are actually almost at the nearly met, right? They're on that clo, far end, close to nearly met. Other students are much further behind in the not met range and, and maybe at the bottom end of that. Each individual student is going to have their own specific growth target based on where they are to where they have to go to get to that met range. So each individual student, we will have a, a target set for them, a scale score target. And we will be monitoring, does each individual student meet their each individual target? And our goal is that at least sixty percent of those students do meet their individual target, and that's up from our current twenty-eight percent.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopez?
Yeah, I think so, just, just for clarification, the last meeting, uh, Goal Two had two years, uh, below grade level, performing below grade level, so that's been changed and it included everyone. So now we're just focusing on fourth through eighth grade, given Goal One. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that last part?
So, so...
Fourth, grades fourth through eight?
Yeah, we're, the focus is fourth through eighth because our Goal One is to make sure we have, uh, students reading at proficiency levels in third grade. Is that correct?
Correct. So the last time when we looked at Goal Two, it still had grades four through eight. So that has been consistent. But what changed from last time to this time was last time we were looking at I-Ready data. And when we looked at I-Ready, the category was two or more years below grade level. That was the category we were focusing on. When we shifted to S-BAC, um, as the metric, there is no two or more years below as a, as a, um, met, as a, a scale score, a score for S-BAC. The approximate that we think meets what would be considered two or more years below on I-Ready, the approximation for that on S-BAC would be the not met range. So we, we, when we switched to S-BAC as the metric to reach, uh, to achieve the growth target that we're setting, um, we had to change from two or more years to the not met range in S-BAC.
Uh, last question, oh, go ahead, Mr. Otto. I'm going to think about how to carefully not pressure you with this question, Mr. Moskowitz. Yeah, yeah. I am presuming that we are operating under a, an evidence-based assumption that we can deduce from I-Re, that there's a correlation from the I-Ready assessment to our S-BAC end-of-year summative assessment.
That was going to be my question too, right?
Good afternoon. Um, yes, there is. And we actually had an opportunity, um, as a team to meet with our I-Ready partners last week and review some of our, uh, recent data from our Diagnostic One. And, um, that is a question that we did pose our team to I-Ready, and there has been strong correlation within their own studies that they're doing across, um, the country and within California with very similar districts or urban settings. Um, and so there is some correlation, little bit slightly off, but not too much. We, we feel very confident in using that data and saying, yes, this, this correlates, it's a good measurement to have and to be included as interim goals.
Mr. Otto?
Yeah, no, I, I, I was just going to point out that in addition to changing the, looking at different tests, that we have to say, okay, we're, we're going to do this, uh, differently. Some of the groups, as was just pointed out, are, there weren't any tests. You can't, you know, you, there's no TK, uh, measurement, and so we had to adjust the, uh, the way we look at this to take into consideration what was going to be available, uh, but still head towards the goal that, that we have. One of the, the elegant things, I think, about the way that this comes out is that we give a definite, an operational definition to equity. That instead of having to say, everybody should get it, it's no, everybody means this, and this does that. And it silences a lot of people who would say, no, equity is that everybody has to be treated the same. And it, this provides an operational basis for that. And, uh, I don't know if that's easy to explain to the public, but, uh, but that's true. And, uh, that's, I think, we're, we're fulfilling what it is that we say that we're doing in our equity and excellence policy by doing this, and it's a, it's an elegant way of doing it.
Out of curiosity, did I-Ready offer you an actual correlation? Did they give you a number?
They didn't necessarily, they showed us some data. And so one of the, the, um, deliverables that they will be providing us will be a report on the specificity of like, how did it correlate in ELA and math? Because again, our team also had that wondering, like, how strong is it correlated? And especially because we're using it as part of our interim goals. So, um, that is something that we should have soon, and then we would be able to provide and, and share it.
In representing whatever they ultimately share with you to the board, um, I generally think of a moderate to strong correlation as something in the, a correlation that is significant, a correlational coefficient that is sufficient for these purposes to be anywhere point-five or above. Um, I think of a strong, a moderate to strong as being kind of point-seven and north, but that tends to be more rare in these type of circumstances. But anything north of point-five, I think, is sufficient to meet the needs that the board's asking you about.
Thank you. Well, definitely, I, I want to say from what I, we, and I have some of my team members here too, um, so they can jump in if, if I, um, if I share their own percentage, but it was, I believe it was around six percent or point-six. And so we felt confident with that. But we did want them to provide additional, um, data for the range of four through eighth because they gave us a sample primarily, it was like elementary, and we wanted to see a bigger scope.
Yeah.
Point-eight.
So point-eight, is that what I heard? So that, to me, points like a strong correlation, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very strong.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That, uh, goal, Board Goal Two, to be, uh, clear, passes five-zero or unanimously.
Uh, Madam Chair, before you go on to Goal Three, uh, can I pose one more question for the staff on Goal Two? You did change it to, um, not met. So this is the universe of all fourth graders, uh, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, uh, who scored in the previous year not met on S-BAC English. Do you have any insights, and you may not have this, but I remember this came up last time we had this conversation, and so I find myself curious. The board specifically elevated two student groups, um, African-American learners and English learners. Do you have any sense the amount of overlap between those student groups and not met?
At this time, I don't have specific numbers, but I can tell you anecdotally that, um, that the not met range on S-BAC is probably overrepresented by our black African-American students and our English learners. So I would say that compared to our overall student body. Um, we do have that data, I just don't have it at my fingertips.
Thank you for your indulgence, Madam Chair. I would encourage, uh, consideration of Goal Number Three.
Would someone like to read that?
I'll, I'll read. Uh, this Goal Number Three, Algebra Proficiency. In pursuit of having more than eighty percent of black African-American students meet the Algebra A through G requirement by the end of grade nine, the proficiency gap between black African-American students and all other students will decline five percent in June twenty-twenty-three to zero percent by June twenty-twenty-eight. Move to approve?
Second.
Uh, discussion. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, so this is, um, where I was asking for the data on long-term English learners because I think we can include, I think we absolutely need to leave our black African-American students here because, uh, they are underperforming. But I also believe we need to include other underperforming groups here, um, in Goal Three and Four, uh, in fact. I did want to know how our, our long-term English learners were doing and if we can get that data, um, because I think it would be, um, a good idea to include, again, other underperforming students in Goals, Goals Three and Four.
I'm happy to share the data. So, um, for our overall all students, um, it, these are students, it, by the end of ninth grade who met the Algebra A through G requirement. Uh, sixty-eight percent of all students in twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-three met the, um, Algebra requirement by the end of ninth grade, sixty-eight percent of all students. And that was a five percent increase over the prior year. In our, with our black African-American students, that, uh, percentage was sixty-four percent. And that was an increase of nine percent over the previous year. For our long-term English learners, the percentage, uh, was fifty-three percent, and that's an increase of fourteen percent over the previous year. So that is purely the data, and I'm happy to, um, share more if there's further questions about that.
So I am going to challenge, uh, my colleagues to, uh, consider including other underperforming subgroups in Goals Three and Four, uh, to include our long-term English learners, to include, uh, maybe our Pacific Islanders, our Cambodian, our multilingual learners. We also know we have, uh, foster youth and, uh, and under, and unhoused, uh, students. But, uh, I'd like for us to consider including other students in these next two goals.
Yeah, my understanding, um, acknowledging that it's important to focus on all of our, um, highest needs, uh, groups, um, I think the context here, correct me if I'm wrong, AJ, was that we, if we're going to have subgroups of students in goals, that we don't have multiple subgroups of students, uh, within goals. I think we spent a large part of our first discussion, uh, you know, around which students would we prioritize, given the guidance that you provided us, AJ, that it's not a best practice to have multiple subgroups of students within each, uh, goal area. It, it, was that? Am I remembering that discussion correctly, AJ?
So there's two pieces of coaching that you'll want to consider with questions like this. The first piece of coaching is that you want to look for the highest need, highest leverage population of students. So what do I mean by highest need? I think you all have already captured this. This is our students who are furthest from educational justice. Um, my constant coaching has always been, you lean toward your highest need students, the students who, if we don't serve them well, that there may not be other options to buoy them up later. But the second consideration, in addition to highest need, is also highest leverage. What highest leverage means is if we make a difference for this population of students, we have some evidence to suggest that there's going to be, um, significant knock-on effects for other groups of students. Um, and, you know, the common example I give is, you know, the, if, if you find out that, um, the, one particular student group, that everywhere that they're achieving, that their peers seem to be achieving more, and everywhere that they are suffering, that their stu, peers seem to suffer more, then that would indicate, focus on that group because as you lift them up, you will in fact lift other groups. There are groups in your school system where you could make a huge difference for them, but that doesn't necessarily mean there's this huge leverage, that there's, there's this huge effect that's going to happen for others. And so, uh, looking for leverage is important because it does give you an ability to, as a board, say, we are lifting up our entire school system, and our access to lifting up our entire school system is by focusing in on this high-leverage group of students that we know if we lift them up, that, that those strategies are working for everybody. So for example, you probably have some extraordinarily high-achieving students in your school system that are just heads and shoulders above their peers nationwide. Now, they got a perfect score on their ACT, or they will in a couple of years when they take it. Targeting your adjustments as organization towards what will help those students probably isn't going to meaningfully help the rest of your student body. Uh, that, that is frequently not a high-leverage student group. And so that's the first challenge, that's the first piece of coaching, is focus on the high-need, high-leverage groups of students. And so what you've got to determine as a body is, has, uh, administration brought you information sufficient to, to lead you to believe that you, that that's where your focus is? So that's the first piece. The second piece then is more direct to your question. And the coaching that I've provided is simply this, the more diverse the group of students that you're focusing on, the less meaningful the data that you get back will be. So I think the actual example I used with you all last time we visited was that if you have a goal that is for kindergarten through tenth grade, whatever that data tells you ain't going to tell you much. Like, it's just, it's too broad to discern meaningful insights from it. Whereas the more narrowly you focus on a particular student group, the more that data actually tells you something meaningful. Uh, what actually is going to work for third graders is not going to be all that useful to inform what adjustments you make for ninth graders. And so I appreciate that one of the things you did with the last goal is that you narrated from basically everybody to just fourth through eighth. That data will be more meaningful to you than a goal that is a much more broad spectrum of grade levels. And that same phenomenon, the breadth or the narrowness of focus on students applies whether we're talking about grade level. A more narrow set of grades will give you more clear insights, a wider set of grades will give you less clear insights. That is also true of, uh, courses. If you try to have a goal that's about English, social studies, and math, that will tell you almost nothing, uh, that will render the data nearly worthless to you. But it also certainly applies to student groups, as you're describing. If we have three or four different student groups in, if the needs of those groups are significantly divergent, then the data becomes less and less meaningful to you. And now, if you happen to pick two student groups that actually have a very aligned set of needs, then that works out for you. Students whose native language is, um, Chinese and students whose native language is Spanish, both are learning English as a second language. And I suspect that a lot of their needs as, uh, English learners are probably going to be much more aligned than if you are comparing... than if you are comparing, uh, a group of students whose native language is Chinese and a group of students who, uh, have missed the last three months of school. Like, these are two, those two student groups, there's probably not a lot of overlap in what their specific set of needs are. And so that's the thing to be looking into. One, are we paying attention to the high-need, high-leverage areas of our student groups? And two, are we being intentional about narrowing our focus such that it gives us meaningful data? So, to the specific question at hand, with those ideas in mind, the way that I would apply those two lessons is I would be asking myself, the two groups are the English learners and black African-American students. Are these students in the high need, uh, are they in our school system? Uh, are these students really high-leverage in our school system? That's the first set of questions I would ask. And then the second set of questions I would ask is, are these two student groups, are the needs that would, are the interventions that would meet their needs sufficiently aligned that if we put their data together, that it will still be meaningful? Or are they sufficiently divergent that if we put their data together, it won't actually, it will actually make it harder to understand what's happening that easier? So that is the coaching, those are the two major considerations, and that's the way that I would apply those considerations to this particular question. I realize that was a lot, is that responsive to your inquiry?
Partially, uh, AJ, and that last question that you posed for us, um, you know, I, I, I don't know if I can answer the leverage part of the question, because we didn't ask staff to compare, uh, leveraging long-term English learners with, uh, African-American students, although our board member has been asking for data on long-term English learners. Um, there's a third layer to this, and, and, and you partially answered the question, AJ. Our communities in the last five years that I've been here, but it extends to prior to me joining the board, have consistently called for us to center black students. Um, we passed an equity policy last year that's calls for centering black students. And at the time, um, not just me, my colleagues here said that the way that we anchor these policies is through our priorities, right? A, a written policy about centering black students. And, and it was centering black students and, because the conversations that we had were that our black student population were the ones that were furthest from the promise that we offer as a school district because of the data that was shared. But we also had conversations and the data, uh, that was presented to us, that, um, if black, if black students performed at an exceptional level, then that would also have, uh, an impact and positive effect on our other highest need students. So, so I'm saying it from, from that angle too, AJ, that this is what our community has called for. Um, you laid out sort of two questions and considerations, but that we did pass an equity policy centering black students. And at the time, and, and again, we can go back and look, I said, hey, this is all great and dandy to have this written, but it needs to be codified in our practices, in our priorities, in our curriculum, in our hiring, uh, and the policy calls for that. So for me, we are upholding, uh, as you pointed, Mr. Otto, the equity and excellence piece. And for me, it also means, when the data has been shared, that that doesn't mean it's at the cost or at the sacrifice of other subgroups. Uh, right? So, uh, I am happy, uh, to have been able to entertain, uh, other goals for other subgroups. We landed on these four, uh, here, so if, 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 if we're talking about adding other subgroups, that's a different conversation, uh, for me.
And, and to be clear, when we started our time together today, I mentioned there are two key pieces of information the board has to consider, community voice and student data. You asked a question specifically about student data, so I shared considerations specific to student data. Um, but the larger point you make is accurate. There are two main considerations the board has to make, and that's, what is the voice of the community and what does the data tell us? Uh, but just on the data side, the considerations that I would have you, being in discernment around is, were the areas of high need, high leverage, and are we have a sufficiently narrow set of students that we're looking at for any given goal that the data that gives us is actually meaningful in terms of informing what pivots we should make?
May I add something, Ms. Craighead?
Well, there was a, a question in our public, uh, testimony about how we landed on the eighty percent. Mark, would somebody like to address that part?
So that would be similar to what I shared in goal one. So our current, um, performance level, so currently sixty-four percent of our ninth graders have met their algebra, um, A through G requirement by the end of ninth grade. When we think about a, a goal that is going to stretch us as a system, but we still think is attainable with a concerted effort, we believe that eighty percent is, is both attainable and stretching us as a system. Again, the number could have been seventy-nine, eighty-two, um, it's four or five years out, but we believe that eighty percent is, is both attainable, uh, but will also stretch our system to try to achieve that.
Thank you.
And Dr. Brown, I want you to add whatever you were going to add. I also want to confirm that our African-American black students, when you look not specifically at algebra, so now, taking a step back and looking at math achievement across the district, our African-American black students are the lowest achieving group of students in the area of mathematics. And so, as we continue to narrow in, the attainment of algebra is being used as a proxy for overall math achievement, because it's also an important gateway to advanced mathematics, to A through G and college and career readiness.
That, that was a portion of what I wanted to add. I also wanted to revisit the idea of the excellence and equity policy that was passed approaching two years ago. And so a goal like this is in direct service to the tenants of that policy. It's something that, when we brought community together, that we heard very strongly throughout the year that we worked together in creation of that document, was that if we don't center the needs of black students, we are actually acting in the spirit of anti-blackness, and that's not what we're standing on. So when we are asked the hard question of how are you implementing or bringing to life the tenants of the equity, the excellence and equity policy, a goal like this is in direct service to what we want to move forward.
And I absolutely believe we need to keep, uh, and center our work on black students. My question has been, for the last three meetings, if we can add another, at least one other group that is underperforming. And, uh, so it sounds like, uh, Dr. Baker, please correct me if I, um, if I heard you, uh, incorrectly. It sounds like our long-term English learners are outperforming our black students as well in math?
So I'm actually speaking from an ethnicity, race ethnicity perspective, when, um, in categories of Hispanic, as they're reported to the state, Hispanic, African-American, white, Asian, other, Cambodian, Filipino, Pacific Islander, and American Indian. Of those subgroups, our black African-American students are the lowest performing. Something that's, that gets increasingly complex in thinking about our English learners is where they enter the system, when they exit, within our schools, when they exit being an English learner and become an RFEP, as they're referred to, and those that remain in the category of long-term English learner, and what school programming looks like for them. So that gets into a whole other category of data. And so just bringing it back, my, um, citation is specifically around race ethnicity.
Yes, and I'm going to ask again, if we can include our long-term, term English learners. To be, be clear for the public, our ELTO students have been with us for at least six years. Once they are re-designated, we are required to continue to monitor them. So, I, um, I believe we need to continue to look at our students who are underperforming, and if there is one, the more group, I think it would only be a good idea to center our work around them. So I would love to see us focusing on all of our underperforming students, but if we must look at those that are maybe the two lowest, I would love to see us take that step and include those students who have been in our district for at least six years, um, who have not been, been re-designated and, um, are still underperforming.
I, I for one am not willing to, um, change the focus of the goal for all the reasons that were stated earlier. That if we don't have a clear focus, then, then we're not giving clear direction to staff. And that the monitor, monitoring of this goal will not be straightforward. And the more, the more direction we give, if we, if we start adding different subgroups, the more directions we give, the, the further from this goal will be. And by, by adopting this goal is not saying that we're not going to pay attention to our, you know, to our other groups. It's just, we're saying, this is the subset of students that needs the most help. And I believe that by helping this one set of students, it's gonna be that tide that lifts all boats. So I don't think that we need to specifically call out different, um, subgroups of, of students in order to serve them. That by staying, um, true to the goal the way it's written, will, we will do that, we will accomplish that. And so for me, and, and I don't know about my colleagues, but for me, I am more than satisfied with sticking to the goal the way it's written.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, so I also want to prioritize all of our most underserved students. I wanna prioritize our students with disabilities. I wanna prioritize our Kamai-speaking students. I wanna prioritize our most recent, uh, immigrant students. Uh, I'm just trying to reconcile, how do we then answer AJ's question around highest need, most underserved? Um, but then, who, who's going to have the biggest impact, um, for our students, uh, as a leveraging, uh, point? So I, I would love to, and, and again, I just wanna remind us, uh, we did have goals with other students in the initial drafts, uh, of goals, and I, I was the first one to say, hey, let, can we do a goal around students with disabilities? Can we do a goal around black students with disabilities? Um, and, and, and we can continue. So I absolutely wanna make sure that we prioritize and target, uh, intentionally and intervene strategically with our most underserved students. I just don't know how we do that and then stay targeted and specific in a goal. Um, so, yeah, if you were to ask me, what are your top five students? We have data on that. I'm sure staff would be, uh, o- open and available to show us the data. But at the end of the day, where do we have the most leverage? It comes down to me, uh, right? And, and again, I point back to our equity policy. It centered black students and students with disabilities and other students. But the, the ideology, philosophy, value, intent, principle was that if we centered black students, that not only would that lift all tides, but it would show our commitment to anti-blackness, our commitment to anti-racist pedagogies, our commitment to dismantling white supremacy, which at the end of the day have a negative disproportionate effect on our students of colors. So I'd love to have a goal on our socioeconomic disadvantaged students. Of course, uh, I would, but I don't know how we embed that in the goal as it's written. We said we wanted a math goal. We asked our district staff, who is the most negatively impacted by what we have not done right by our math, uh, curriculum, by our math resources, by our math tutoring, by our math ELO, by our math summer school? And they came back and said, our black students. Um, and again, that to me is not mutually exclusive of us absolutely intentionally prioritizing our most underserved students. And I wanna see evidence of that, too. I, I'm just trying to reconcile, how do we do that within this goal?
Uh, Mr. Otto?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm struggling with how to, to make this point, and that is, these things happen over time. And over time, you can only do a certain number of things, and if you try and do everything, you don't do much of anything, or you run that danger at least. And, um, uh, I will never, uh, forget, um, a mutual acquaintance of AJ's in mind, a guy named David Osborne. We had, uh, come to Long Beach City College to do a retreat, and, uh, we presented our thirty goals. And, uh, he said, you need three. He says, 'cause otherwise, you're not gonna be able to follow them, and even if you could, you wouldn't do a very good job of it. So, um, I, I had an epiphany with that, and that was, you gotta do what you can do. And, uh, we're trying to get off the ground here. I don't think we're leaving people out. I also see that things change over time. Um, you know, a very short time ago, uh, we were measuring people on an annual basis, and then this I-ready exam came in where you got your results back in a couple of months, and it changed the way that we did things. And, uh, so time makes a difference. Uh, we have a Long Beach College promise that was passed a while ago that was, uh, you know what? If you get in, uh, we're gonna give you guaranteed admission to, I mean, if you, if you graduate to, to, uh, Cal State Long Beach. And then we learned that, well, in certain majors, but, um, not, but not in other majors that people like a lot. And so that didn't work so well, so we're, we're, we're constantly fine-tuning that. And I accept that, and I think that that's okay. Uh, we can't do it for, um, nefarious reasons. Uh, we gotta keep our eyes on the prize, and the prize is what I think we adopted, uh, recently with this. And, uh, and we've done a pretty good job of it. And, uh, and by the way, time gives us the opportunity to even during this five-year period, uh, change what we wanna do. Not just fine-tune these things, but, uh, come up with things that we think are more important, because they have emerged as more important. Because thank God, this is not a natural science. And, uh, what we're learning to do is we're gonna change the, the ways of the, the universe. We're just in a process. And I feel comfortable with the steps that we have taken, uh, or are saying that we're gonna take in this process. And, um, we don't know if it works yet, but I don't think we can know if it works if we keep, if we, if we change it very much. I am very sympathetic to, and I don't know the numbers for, uh, English learning, learners and, uh, what it would look like to do that. But I'm worried about, um, getting, about moving forward and, and, and continuing to make progress, uh, because we know that, that what, what we've got set up is, is a good idea. But we, but we don't know whether it was the best idea, because we haven't got the data yet, because we're just beginning, so.
So I wanna be clear, um, sorry, I'm not saying and/or, I'm saying, why not, why do we have to say and/or? Why not and both? I'm saying, let's add other subgroups, and we should be looking at our long-term English learners who have been in our system for over six years and are underperforming. I do believe, Mr. Moskovich, uh, the data, if you want to repeat it again, they are trailing behind. Uh, and I don't believe that, uh, it is an impossible task. As a district, we have a responsibility to all of our students. And of course, I absolutely understand, we are not trying to leave anyone behind. What I'm trying to bring to everyone's attention is the incredible need to include another group that is trailing behind. Mr. Moskovich, can you give us those numbers again?
Yes, I can, but I, and, and as I give the numbers this time, I also think, I'd like to add some context to that as well. But the, the overall for our black students' algebra was sixty-four percent, up nine from last year. Our long-term English learners, fifty-three percent, up fourteen percent from last year. Um, if we're trying to compare our black African-American student subgroup and our long-term English learners, it's very challenging to compare the two. Our long-term English learners started out as a large subgroup in kindergarten, potentially, of English learners. And as students were proficient throughout our system, as they went along their years, they were removed from that category, and they became fluent English proficient. So what's left in the ELTOs are students who have never shown proficiency. Our black student subgroup includes students who were proficient and have been proficient from the beginning. If we were to, were to remove from the black student subgroup those students who have been proficient in the past, that category would be much lower than our long-term English learners. It's, so you can't compare the two, and so I understand the interest in, in, um, meeting their, the needs of long-term English learners, but to compare the two subgroups with the data is, is challenging, because they're not, we're not talking about the same- we're not talking about the same process to determine the category. One is based on ethnicity, and one is based on proficiency with English language. The other thing I think is important to share, just as context, I'm going to use an example of Lincoln, actually. You all heard from Ms. Nemec a couple of months ago or a few meetings ago. She and the Instruction Intervention Coordinator were here. Lincoln is a school that actually, relative to its size, has a very small number of African-American students, a very large number of of English learners. At a school like Lincoln with a goal like we would set, of course, Ms. Nemec is going to continue to focus on our Black African-American students. And in fact, this last year, Lincoln had some of the highest performance of Black African-American students in our elementary schools, which was why she was here with us to share some of that work. They also have a very high number of English learners. And even while they were focusing on their Black students as a focus, because we, as a district, were focusing on that, they also set a goal for their English learners. And they also continued to, at the school level, monitor progress of their English learners, provide intervention support to their English learners. And in fact, their English learners were one of the highest performing groups of English learners in our elementary schools. So the the quality work that was invested into improving instruction for our Black African-American students at Lincoln also had that that impact. This this goal would not preclude, and in fact, as principal supervisors, we would continue to hold schools accountable to ensuring that all of their students are improving and will continue to monitor that at the individual student level, within grade levels, within departments. So I just wanted to be clear that just because a a group isn't listed in board goals does would not keep us from monitoring at the individual school level. But I do think it's important to not, it's very challenging to compare our Black African-American student subgroup and our long-term English learner subgroup. Yes, the numbers are different, but the groups of students are very different. And how we how do we calculate, if you will, that group is very different. So it's 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 challenging. I know it's hard, maybe for folks at home to understand. They hear differences in in overall performance, but they're very different subgroups in the way that those subgroups are formed.
And you mentioned a district focus on English language learners. And so we already have a district goal in place for English language learners?
So part of part of the challenge is that not all schools equally have the same types of subgroups. So if a school has a significant or any English learners at their school, they are going, one of our requirements for multiple years, including in our single plan for student achievement, they must set a goal for growth for English learners. That is a federal requirement. That is something that we do at the state level, that we expect all of our schools to set a goal for their English learners. So that that's going to happen. Now, not all of our schools have the same number and size of English learners, so the work may look different from one school to another. Not all of our schools have the same number of Black African-American students as another. So the the work is going to look different from school to school. But when you when you calculate that up at the district level, it is very clear that our Black African-American students, as from an ethnicity standpoint, are significantly underperforming other ethnic subgroups.
Mr. Moskovich, on the last point, and I and I don't want to understate my absolute agreement with Ms. Lopez that we should be prioritizing our emerging bilinguals, particularly our long-term English learners. Two two questions, Mr. Moskovich. One, well, actually, one question, one comment, depending on what the answer is to the question. So Ms. Lopez is correct. She's been asking for data on our long-term English learners. I know that the data for our African-American students is roughly 11% of our district is African-American right now, 11, 12%? 12, okay. What's the percentage of long-term English learners? Do we have that data? It shifts. I know it shifts, right?
I can tell you, when we're looking at the N size on the number of, just on this particular metric we're talking about, the number of students proficient or that are in ninth grade, and we're looking at algebra proficiency. So last year, we had 554 Black African-American students in ninth grade. We had 354 long-term English learners. So it's just from a kind of a numbers perspective, you can see that it's approximately, not quite twice as as much, but maybe 70% higher.
Yeah. And then my second question is related to Ms. Craigheads. Do we have, Dr. Baker, can you give us a sense of where else are we prioritizing our emerging bilinguals, our long-term English learners? Whether it's with district goals, whether it's with school-specific goals? Because I don't want that, the spirit of that to be lost, right? Just just like we would do the same with our students with disabilities, right? I'm I'm just trying to reconcile, how do we do that with this goal that is specifically targeting and positively, hopefully, impacting a subgroup of students that's a racial group of students, all right? Versus another subgroup of students, like I said, our socioeconomic disadvantaged, our long-term English learners, our foster students. Foster students are not a race, right? So again, I I'm not against us prioritizing subgroups of students. But within our students with disabilities, we have African-American students. We have ninth-grade African-American students on IEPs right now in our district. So I I want to get a sense of not losing the spirit of where Ms. Lopez's questions and and comments are coming from. But at the same time, how do we walk through that within this goal? So Dr. Baker, can you give us a sense of where else are we prioritizing? Not exclusive of other underserved groups, our our emerging bilinguals, our long-term English learners?
Yeah, the there's significant monitoring at the school level. And I'll say, over the last few years, we have implemented an increased focus by having a shift in the course sequence for long-term English learners at the high school level. We've installed a curriculum-based and monitoring system that connects to what you approved in the last board meeting in terms of the redesignation criteria. So there are tremendous tremendously greater systems, both for teachers to access for resources and classroom materials and curriculum, as well as focused monitoring that happens at the school level, which leads into the level offices in the supervision of principals and school goals, having to have that as part of their their data monitoring, which has a number of different facets to it, that is around data sessions with teams at the school level, a performance assessment for the principal, that also leads into the level office goals. So it's a it's a cascading to classrooms and then cascading back up, including what Brian mentioned, which which is the single plan for student achievement that actually is federally required to have the data and metrics, as well as the actions being taken that associate with supplemental funding for those students and the actions of the school that are monitored through the SPSA process. So in no way does the focus on English learners, including long-term English learners, go away. It's just not present in the goal that is here before you.
Dr. Baker, if I may, there's also significant work being built out in our professional development plan for this year in support of English learners, specific work on designated integrated ELD. That's going to be part of our QCI II training, as well as an entire day session focusing on designated ELD with our elementary teachers and our English teachers at the secondary level, who are the ones that are going to be responsible for the designated ELD instruction.
Mr. Miller?
Just wanted to first thank everybody for their comments and their input on such an important topic, right? We're talking about not only just math proficiency, but we're talking about uplifting a community that within our district has both underperformed and felt undervalued for so long. I I think that when we had our conversations about the Equity and Excellence Policy and the work that was done over the past few years regarding our Black students in particular, I too have felt very, I've had a high level of interest on not just the cultural uplifting that we've been doing over the past two years, but also centering their academic performance for these communities as well. And that is what this goal will help do. For the sake of the the business at hand, I wanted to confirm a couple of things, and with the support of the Chair, potentially move forward with the approval. So I want to, first off, we confirmed why this demographic, right? We spoke to the work that had been done and the underperformance of our Black students from a mathematical standpoint. We also have already confirmed why this metric. Correct? And how we'll be gauging that over the next five years? We've also confirmed the value of this metric. You've already shown us statistically how many African-American students who have underperformed in the ninth grade in contrast to our LTALs, along with provided how it will further impact the academic success of the entire district if we meet these goals, correct? To that, I would hope that we've answered all of the concerns, and we can move forward with a vote.
Okay. I'd like to hear more from our public to see if there is a need to include another subgroup here. And I I've asked for this data, again, this is the third time I'm going to say it. I asked for it for this data over a month ago, and we left it to the very end. And I just don't see why we cannot add another group in here that is not performing. And I don't see why it's such a difficult task for our district to focus on two groups instead of one.
Well, we have a call for the question, so we'll put it to a vote. All in favor?
Just for clar, we're voting on goal?
We're go, we're voting on board, yeah.
Yes, goal three.
Are we voting on call for the question?
No, we are, I am calling the question. I'm calling the question. This is, to be clear, goal three, as written. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. And that, no, I'm sorry?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes on this goal because I think it's critical that we center work on Black students. I want to be clear that I don't believe it's an impossible task to include our LTAL students here, but I'm going to vote yes on this.
Okay. I believe we're ready to move on to goal four.
I can read that one. In pursuit of having more than 66% of our Black African-American graduation, graduating seniors A through G eligible, the proficiency gap between Black and African-American students and all others students will decline from 15% in June of 2023 to 0% by June 2028.
Move to approve.
Sir?
Discussion, Ms. Lopez.
Same question. Goal four, can we add another subgroup here?
Can can somebody give us the background on this goal and why this is, we came up with this as a goal? Mr. Moskovich?
I'm happy to start, and I'll invite, you know, Dr. Camarino. I know you have a lot of work to do with A through G, so feel free to jump in. So when we talk about A through G eligibility, we're looking at those courses that students need to pass with a grade of C or better in order to be eligible for the UCCSU system. So these are all classes from ninth grade through 12th grade that students are required to take in order to be eligible for UCCSU, and they must pass these courses with a grade of C or higher. And so we are, the the goal then would be, in addition to our ultimate goal of a 60, 66% of our Black African-American students being A through G eligible when they graduate as seniors, the goal, though, is that we, in pursuit of that, that we will narrow the gap between our Black African-American students and all other students from 15% to 0%. That is the goal.
And so I believe one of the reasons that we landed on this one as as a goal was because the gap is larger between our Black and African-American students with all of the students. I believe that's why we landed on that. It seems like a lot of our conversation from the last goal would be pertinent to this goal as well. And so I I would stand by my own opinion that just because the goal centers on our Black and African-American students doesn't mean that this is not going to benefit other subs, other subgroups of of students. And and I I appreciate you advocating fiercely for our English language learners and and other subgroups of students. But I also believe that if we don't focus on one group, that it dilutes the goal. And for me, that's that's one reason that we need to stick to having this very targeted focus. And also for the, you know, all the other reasons with, you know, supporting our excellence and equity policy, supporting the fact that that this is a subgroup of student, students that need our help the most. And by helping them, we will be helping everyone else. So I, although I appreciate the fact that we have other groups that need help, I I feel like this is the right way to go on this goal, and also that we are sticking to the direction given by our coach on, you know, does this meet the criteria for the, does it serve the the voice of the community? Do we understand the the needs of our students? And I believe with the the data that we've been given, that that supports the goal in both in both of those areas. Dr. Benitez?
Dr. Baker, apologies, I had to put some peanuts in me because I was embarrassed that if I turned on the microphone, everybody would hear my stomach growling back here. Dr. Baker, just two two questions. One is related to data presentations that we receive. Does it preclude you and or our executive team as directed by you to present data for us in addition to data relating to any goals that we adopt tonight?
Nothing precludes us from presenting data or providing, for example, a quarterly report in the in the same areas that we focus our schools and the data that we're providing for our schools. I would say, and probably I'll I'll call A.J. in for this conversation, when we think about a monitoring calendar that is aligned to your goals, it would more likely be providing a report or an opportunity for either individually or in a two-by-two setting to come in and meet with staff from the research office with further inquiry, so that we're thinking about what is in the boardroom is related to your goals and guardrails and what might be outside our other means for providing the information. And nothing precludes a special presentation or in a workshop of seeing the breakdown of of all student subgroups.
On that, thank you, Dr. Baker. On that last point, the student subgroup, as we've requested, and even in times where we haven't requested, we have a historical record of you presenting data that particularly as we either express or as your team finds necessary, does disaggregate data to either illustrate or emphasize points. Do we have your ongoing commitment, Dr. Baker, that in not just data around our goals, but any other data that's presented either publicly at our board meetings or requested, will still include subgroup data, namely whether it's long-term English learners and or data around our other most underserved students?
You have my commitment, especially as we narrow the goals that will be talked about in the boardroom. I'll say for two years, our research office was incredibly supportive of the breadth of what we were trying to achieve, which was to really create a full understanding for the Board of Education about all the different academic issues that our students face, where the successes were, where our challenges were. And so now that you are creating a focus that allows our research team to go deeper on those and to support our schools, which are the the increasing focus of the research office is to be a school improvement-oriented office, there will definitely be an opportunity for us to provide additional data reports for the board.
Yeah, and I want to be careful here because I don't want A.J. then saying, oh, can't hold your superintendent accountable if it's not a goal that you're adopting. We have an equity and excellence policy that explicitly states that we're going to anchor our efforts around racial equity. And that includes racial equity in opportunities and educational outcomes. We also, I'm not going to jump ahead here, A.J., but sneak peek, are considering Board of Education guardrails that also say superintendent is not allowed to implement or adopt any classroom curricula or programming that does not prioritize educational and racial equity, which again, to me, is anchored in subgroup data, presentations, and accountability. We also have, under consideration, superintendent may not allow major We also have under consideration superintendent may not allow major district-wide initiatives to go forward or forth without engaging students of color and their families following stakeholder engagement principles that are utilizing best practices. So there are other mechanisms to hold ourselves and our district accountable to make sure that our most underserved students are not lost, deprioritized, de-emphasized, unconsidered as part of us centering black students in this goal. In my understanding, our commitments and principles and values and accountability measures. Dr. Baker.
Yes, you are. May I draw a correlation to the IEP process? Because this is exactly what every parent who has a child who has an IEP goes through.
Right, because assessment information.
That is gathered data. From that data, needs are prioritized. From those prioritized needs, goals are developed. But that does not mean that those goals are the only things that teachers teach to, work on, and address in the classroom. And that's exactly what this process has been. We've used data to determine what our prioritized goals are and from those priori, those prioritized needs are, and from those prioritized needs, goals are being developed. But it doesn't mean it's the only thing we're working on, and it doesn't mean the only thing that we'll measure. So the IEP process is so complex, and when you get a real-life example of what's happening, I think it's important to highlight it, that's what you're doing right now.
I do just want to remind my colleagues that with invisibility comes inequities. And so we don't see things in paper that can lead to, to inequities.
Well, I, I believe it does live in paper because it's going to be in the guardrails. So it will be visible and, and available.
And, and I would even go a little bit further than that and say, if you put everything in there, if you had to put everything in there, then it would bliss out. There would just, there would be nothing that you could focus on and say, this is what we're doing or this is what we did. And I don't think by drawing the line at the, the goals that we are being asked to adopt without modifying them to include one specific other group, I don't know if that's your recommendation on this fourth goal as well, but that, that we're, we're somehow making the rest of the stuff invisible. It's, it's not invisible. I mean, it's what we do every day. It's just not what we're shouting out about in a particular goal at this moment in time. And I've lived through lots of situations in different places where what happens is you pull everything out and, and, and it becomes hard to, to focus and make progress.
Yeah, I think I just, I, I just had a difficult time throughout this afternoon understanding how difficult it can be to our district, to us, to include this other underperforming students. So I wasn't asking for us to include students that are achieving at high levels, that are meeting grade level standard. I was asking us to include students who were underperforming, not achieving, and absolutely we want to continue to include the work and focus on our black students. There's a lot, a lot of great things happening as a result of our black student initiative, which I was hoping that we could fund more, and I even sent an email asking, can we increase the funding for our, for our black students? But I just thought that it would only serve as well to include other students, just at least another subgroup that we may be neglecting, and we could place a focus and help bring all of our students up. So that was it. But I, but, but I want to make sure that nobody in this room is taking my comments as, oh, Board Member Lopez is not for black students or wants to pull them out. That is exactly not what I've ever said or intended to come across. I have been asking to include our long-term English learners against these kids have been in our system for a long time, and they are not achieving, many of them aren't, clearly they haven't been, been re-designated, and I thought it would be a good idea to include them, but, but I'm also a team player, and I also respect my colleagues. And, and so with that said, I guess we're ready to vote.
I would just add that I don't believe we have students that are being neglected, that we've had Dr. Baker, Mr. Moskovitz, talk about how we're supporting our English language learners, and I, I don't believe they're being neglected. So I would just make that kind of friendly amendment to, to your comments about how we can add another subgroup, you know, to this goal.
President Craig, I'll, I'll just add too, and this isn't intended to bring comfort, but just to also provide notice that since 2020, we, we had the formation of a multilingual office that has actually increased in, in its staffing, in its precision and attention to programming, to the implementation of the elevation tool, to NLSA, to working around both compliance and also quality of programming. And so it is also with that in mind that I, I want you to have some confidence in the staff's focus.
Dr. Benitez.
Madam Chair, I, I don't want to go into the intentions behind your comments, and I mean nothing but respect. I do think that we've heard from our community that they have felt neglected, particularly our black students. I want to remind us of the testimonials that our black students provided about wanting to feel valued and heard and appreciated and celebrated, and I'm saying it all due respect because I know you didn't mean it that way. But I do think by saying that we don't neglect students, nonetheless, students and families and communities have felt neglected. At the same time, I appreciate us lifting up those students and communities that have felt neglected. I hear from them very often. I hear from our non-native English-speaking families about how they felt disengaged, disrespected. There's distrust at the school site level, so I don't want that to be the focus of, of our, whether we vote and, and vote to adopt this goal, but I also don't want communities to feel like we're disregarding what they have shared with us. And, and again, I'm saying it with all due respect, I know you didn't intend it that way, but I, but I also know that words are powerful. And for me, I do hear the sentiment that students and families feel undervalued, ignored, neglected, disengaged. And so I know that our, we are doubling down on our efforts to make sure that no one feels neglected in our district. But our educational outcomes certainly point to a lot of important work needing to be done to improve and build that trust so that no one in our district feels neglected.
Well, I appreciate that. And my, my, my comment wasn't in regard to how our students feel, but it was, it was more towards the district work in support of our English language learners, and I appreciate you making that clarification because I acknowledge that, that there are students that don't feel heard and, and that feel neglected, and that's a terrible place, you know, to be in. And so I acknowledge those students and their experience, but my comments were, in fact, more towards the effort of what the district is doing on behalf of our English language learners. But anyhow, let's go ahead and take the vote. So all in favor of goal four?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Goal four passes five zero.
Madam Chair, before we proceed, a few things. One, it is sufficiently rare that it is worth lifting up in real time when I get a chance to do so, that you have five board members who clearly see things in some very different ways. I, I actually don't think the way that you all see things are horribly incompatible, but you definitely are using a different lens to arrive at things. I, I think if I'm fully understanding Maria's argument, that there is a need to have more of a focus on this particular student group and that the lack of that in the goals, that she fears that will have a tangible impact. I think, you know, Juan, I think the argument that I heard you lift up is that there are other systems in place that are designed to protect that student group. There are not sufficient systems in place to protect black African-American student group. I think both of those arguments are incredibly valid. That's not what's most interesting to me. What's most interesting is you have very much arguments that I do think can live in concert with each other. What's interesting to me is that in the face of those disagreements, not only was the conversation about those disagreements respectful in a way that is increasingly rare in school boards across the nation, but you also have one of your colleagues who feels very strongly that a modification should be made and still chose not to voice that frustration by voting against the goal itself. I, I think the way I heard you articulate is, I'm actually in support of this goal. I'd be more in support of a amended version of it. That is also an exceedingly rare phenomenon in school boards across the nation. And so I just wanted to lift that up because what just played out here is exactly the type of conversation that deserves to happen in advance of adopting goals. And then how it ultimately played out demonstrates a kind of maturity of service that, again, I'm seeing less and less and less of across the nation. My hope then as a governing body would be twofold. One, honor what just happened, can take care of each other, protect each other, defend each other, support each other, honor what just happened, because it is a, it is a group norm that is worth protecting. It will do more good for your students than the opposite set of behaviors would do. The opposite set of behaviors will feel better for you, but they'll actually be more harmful for your students. And then the second piece of coaching I would have for you, the four board members who kind of clearly felt leaning in one direction on the, these two goals and the one, is pay close attention to what just happened because at some point you're going to be on the other side of this thing, and I hope that you will behave the way Maria behaved in this, that she fought aggressively, used data, used logic, used intellect to make a point, and pushed and pushed and pushed advocacy to the fullest. But then at the end of it said, I'm going to support what we're doing as a team even when it's not perfectly aligned with the needs that I see. Pay close attention to what you just observed. I guarantee sometime before your term is over, you other four are going to be on the other side of that argument. I pray that you will behave likewise. With that said, I certainly hope that that series of conversations also informs the next conversation, which is your guardrails. I would likewise recommend that you adopt a series of guardrails that describe what are the values that have to be protected. I have yet to hear any meaningful disagreement among the five of you regarding any of the guardrails. There is clearly individual things that need to be discussed about the goals, that's why I encourage you to take them one at a time. I, I don't have that same concern about the guardrails. I think it's great if you take all of them in one vote, but certainly if someone makes that motion as part of the discussion, if there is a last-minute effort to amend that motion, to add a fourth guardrail or something, then I, I think you all can work through that. But my encouragement would be to have someone read the three proposed guardrails and then to make a motion and then discuss in advance of making a determination.
Well, thank you. Thank you for those, I'm going to take them as compliments, so thank you for the compliments. And in honor of that, that complimentary conversation, I'm going to ask Ms. Lopez to read our guardrails for us.
And I heard AJ say we were out of sync with the rest of the nation. The school boards were different.
You are different, that is correct.
Okay, so the superintendent may not allow resources to be allocated without evidence of their equitable distribution aligned with the excellence and equity board policy. We also have the superintendent may not allow major district-wide initiatives to go forth without engaging students of color and their families following stakeholder engagement principles that are utilizing current adopted best practices. And finally, the superintendent may not, may not allow implementation or adoption of any classroom curricula or programming that does not prioritize educational and racial equity.
Move for approval.
Say it.
Discussion. All right, we'll go right to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those guardrails pass unanimously lickety-split.
So I want to talk then about next steps. Well done. I don't know why you're excited, it's only been three years. So what there is to do is highlight next steps. One, you already mentioned earlier, and thank you, and I pray that you remain vigilant about it, which is the monitoring. So the next step in the monitoring is that we'll have to build out a monitoring calendar. We'll gladly, as always, I'm able to work with the administration to put that together. Once you, as they're building out the monitoring calendar, we're going to need to start monitoring practice. Monitoring is a very different thing. It is not just randomly asking questions. There, there's an intentionality and purpose behind monitoring. And so the best thing to do would be for us to schedule a time to do a monitoring practice where we get a practice monitoring report, and then we go through it just for learning purposes. So even before the real stuff comes online, that, there is a board, you just get some practice and practice. Staff, just know that while the monitoring calendar normally goes pretty quickly, you all will develop that, but it's the board's monitoring calendar, you will have to adopt it. It's not their calendar, it's your calendar. You decide when, what happened at the board meetings, but they know when data is available, so they'll be the ones who kind of put a rough draft together for you. The monitoring calendar is a different beast entirely. Staff, just know that the first two or three versions of it ain't going to be the final version. Like this is a real iterative thing, and so just don't get too wed to whatever your first draft is. I guarantee you that ain't going to be it. So what will happen is we'll go through multiple versions, we'll try out a few versions with the board when we get into real monitoring, but it's probably six months down the road before you really file, land on, okay, this is our template for monitoring, this is how, this is the information not only that the board wants, but this is what is actually informing managerial decision-making at the senior office level. Just understand that that is, that is a task that is just iterative, I haven't found any other way to get there. And so next steps, the staff develops a draft monitoring calendar in the board, we'll have to take that on. While the board is practicing to monitor, the staff will be building out monitoring reports, and then hopefully sometime, two or three months from now, you actually be able to start real monitoring in earnest. And so, you know, if, if that can get started in January or February, depending on when data is available, then that sounds about the right timing. It takes some work to get there. In addition, your biggest enemy is not actually any of that work. Your biggest enemy is figuring out how to manage the other work that you already have assigned yourselves, because for the monitoring to be meaningful, it has to be the majority. If you want your entire staff and your community to prioritize the goals that you've just adopted, you've got to make them the majority of what you focus your time and energy on. What that means is if you're going to spend half of your time going forward on monitoring, that means everything else you're doing that's not monitoring has to fit the other half of your time. That is probably going to trigger a significant redesign of some of your meetings and processes. It's also probably going to have to trigger some redesign of the basic procedures that you as a board use to operate. And so those are the other major tasks then that fall to the board over these next couple months, that you're going to have to look through policies and figure out which of these are we going to have to tweak. of these are we going to have to tweak so that we can make the monitoring the main use of our time? And what are we going to have to change about how our board agenda occurs? What is our monthly cadence as that occur? And so those are the next steps. So there's some next steps, and you don't have to remember any of this. I'll send an email to you after this with all of this in it. But just to say, there's a bunch of work that needs to happen over the next two and a half, three months in order for you to really start taking advantage of the goals and guardrails that you've just adopted in place. So before I go on, what questions do you have about the next steps I've outlined? The board needs to get trained up on monitoring. The administration needs to put together monitoring calendar and start developing its monitoring, the template for its monitoring reports. The board needs to think through its policies and needs to do any necessary redesign to its meetings and its cadence of meetings. What questions do you have about any of that?
Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Mr. Crable, for covering the essence of what comes next. My question is around timing for both informing and educating our community on the process that you just lined out. And we asked them to invest time to help inform and guide this work. What is our role as a board now to let them know, here's what the next steps of the work entails?
When is your next election?
Next year, March?
It's, it's in March of each year. So it's...
Every two years.
I'm sorry, March and every other year. So the next one is March of 2024. Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify. So normally...
If there's a runoff, it's in November.
If there's a runoff. How often is that the case?
No, no. The primaries will always be in March. If there is a runoff, meaning nobody gets 50% of the vote, then the, the actual runoff isn't until November.
All right. But so frequently the case. Got it. So I'd, I'd definitely focus in on March. What you want to do is you want to get in the habit, so I'm leading up to answering your question. What you want to do is you want to get in the habit of providing extensive training for your community and potential candidates before they even file and definitely after they file, but before the primary. So when does filing open for the primary? Yeah.
Thirteenth of November.
All right, got it. So, so now that we're here, the standard sequence that I recommend is before filing opens, do some type within the two to three month period before filing opens for the primary, I would schedule some type of community training then. During the period between the primary, the filing and the primary, I'd schedule some type of community training then. And then somewhere in the period, about two to three months before the general, I'd schedule a training then. So that's every two years, that's three trainings that you're doing with the community, just so that you're constantly pushing information out. The focus of those trainings is around effective school board governance. How does the community advocate effectively with its school board? How does the school board effectively serve the community? That is the purpose of those three. And so that's why I asked about when your elections are, because that means those are coming up very immediately. So that's one way that you have an obligation of constantly being in communication with your community. You have an obligation to constantly educate them. In this case, I'd recommend at least those three times every two years about what does it look like for the community to effectively advocate to, for the children to the board? What does it look like for the board to effectively represent the vision and values of the community? In addition to that, I recommend at least once, but generally preferably twice a year, and generally after your summative date is available. When is your summative became available? When does the state get it back to you?
Officially?
So usually around September, October, November, somewhere in there. So I recommend that at least once a year, preferably twice, but at least once a year, that you schedule specific time to go out to the community to report out on progress relative to your goals at least once a year. And that's the board reporting of this. You're the community's representative. Lovely lady, she is not the community's representative. You are. So when it comes time to update on what the district is doing, that's her job to update you. When it's time to, you know, all the operations and what's happening, that's what happens month after month after month. But at least once a year, you owe it to your community to come out to the community and say, here's the goals that we've adopted based on listening to your vision, and here's where we started, here's where we're at, and here's where we're going, at least once a year. And then finally, as it relates to calendaring, I'd also, because these wind up being public meetings, I want, recommend that you calendarize well in advance what are the times that the board is going to do whole board trainings, where the whole point is just to come together and be trained on something. And I recommend you calendarize those and treat those as opportunities where certainly members of the staff, but also members of the public will be able to observe those trainings. And so I'd calibrate those around. Are there things that the board needs to know that the community also would benefit from knowing? And calendarize that. So when you put all that together, that means every single, every two-year period, you'd have somewhere in the neighborhood of seven different times when you are actively going to have sessions for the purpose of either training the community or having a two-way dialogue with the community about performance. Again, you don't have to remember all that. I'll put all of that in my summary email to you. But essentially, all of that should be calendarized. So it shouldn't be, and it should be on that same five-year timeline. So you should have all of those dates lined out from now through June of 2028. So that way, people aren't guessing about it. There isn't, oh, we have to hurry up and plan this. That's already scheduled and calendarized long in advance, and then it's just a matter of executing. It's also important because at some point, the five of you won't be here. You want the next U's coming in to already have all that in place. They shouldn't have to invent it the way you've had to invent it. The part of the point of this is that you were doing hard work so that your successors don't have to work nearly as hard. They can focus more of their energy on serving students, not putting systems in place to serve students. Is that responsive to your inquiry? Other questions about what comes next? And staff, feel free to dive in on this because most of this is going to land on your shoulders. Other questions about what comes next?
I would just add to the schedule that you put in terms of training, that once their elections have been held, if, if necessary, you, we should evaluate our onboarding process so that it becomes meaningful to learn about this. And that may include the assignment of mentors to new people.
Yes, certainly. But if you faithfully follow what I'm suggesting, is that you actually can, don't have to be as aggressive about onboarding, and instead you're being much more aggressive about pre-boarding. Is that you, the ideal scenario is think of everything that you've... Maria, how long have you, you're the newest. How long have you been on the board now?
I was sworn in, sorry, I was sworn in in December and I started in January.
Oh, you're a vet. Yeah, you've been here for a bit. But so think of everything that you knew about serving by your third month in, in office. All, everything, all of that is what folks should ideally know before they ever file. That's what you want to target. Think of whatever you, it took to finally figure out about service to the students and how the board operates by three months into office. Now consider you should have known all of that before you even signed your name on the document to say, I'm going to file. That's what you actually want to target. You want to, that's why I mentioned those three dates. One of those is before anybody even files. Another one is between filing and primary, and another's between primary and general. But the real intention here is that's not just for candidates. That's by design for as large a swath of your community as possible, but particularly targeting folks that are likely to become candidates. Your most likely people to run for school board, parent leaders, education leaders, neighborhood leaders. Let me check that. I think that covers most people. Who here was a parent leader before you got on the school board? Any neighborhood leaders? Any community leaders before you got on the school board? Well, there you go. So we've got you all covered. And then you have oddball professors. And so this, so maybe add professors into your list of targets, but who you really are most often going to target. Who are your neighborhood, community leaders? Who are your parent leaders? Who are your education leaders? That that's where most of your future school board members are going to come home. You want to train them as much as possible before they ever consider election. Because here's the thing, as much as I just mentioned how what you all have got going is kind of special, given the backdrop of how Cray School Board meetings are happening across the country, all of that, what you've got going now, totally go away in one election. You, you just owe it to your students not to leave that up to chance. The more that you can help people understand what the role actually is and be prepared for the role before they ever file, the greater the likelihood that you consistently produce a board that is going to do its best job of serving students. Any other question on this before we transition? Because I've got one other big thing to talk about, but other questions about the next steps that we've talked about so far.
I just wanted to ask about your thoughts on any modification to that timeline, given the filing date being today and looking at an election four months away. Would you modify, adjust, recommend something different, given that unique timing of right now?
Yeah, so basically I have not done my job well. We should have been having this conversation last time I was in this room. But yes, I would just move into hurry-up offense, and I'd schedule two between now and March. And by the way, this is normal. This is what we're doing with most of our boards across the nation who are doing this. I or members of my team are leading trainings for their community and for candidates long before elections ever come along. And the ideal scenario is we get to a place where it's actually not me leading it, it's y'all leading these things. The community should be trained by you all, ideally more so than even me. But we're not there yet, but eventually we will get there. So that's the next steps. The one other big next step that board you need to be aware of, but that doesn't actually have a whole lot to do with you, is cascading. This work doesn't actually come to life in earnest until you take this and you cascade it down throughout the organization. So let's talk about what that looks like. The community has already cascaded its vision and values down to you all, and you all have taken that cascade of vision and values and condensed it into a set of goals and guardrails. The next step is that you all are cascading those goals and guardrails down to your superintendent, and she's going to take that and develop a set of interim goals and interim guardrails. Then, in the same way that her evaluation now becomes goals and guardrails. So if you want to know how you're going to evaluate your superintendent, goals and guardrails. How do we know if she's doing the job that we've hired her to do? Well, we'll just look at the metrics, and the metrics will tell us. And either she's doing the job, in which case, kind of done here, or the metrics say that we're not growing, in which case you have to have a conversation about, hey, why aren't we growing and what are you going to do to make that happen? But that becomes her evaluation, is the goals and guardrails. That is the next critical part of the cascade, is you have to change how you evaluate your superintendent to make it clear to her what the priorities are in fact the priorities. The next level of cascade is from her to her cabinet, is that she's got to start changing how she evaluates her team to make sure that all of their evaluations, at least 50% of those, are directly aligned back to some of the interim goals and interim guardrails. That it should not be possible for them to say, hey, I'm succeeding, but none of the priorities that you've just adopted are actually happening. Like that, that just wouldn't make sense. The next level of the cascade is they've got to cascade that out to their direct reports. And they should be having monthly meetings around each of the goals to figure out, are all of the different teams within central office actually making progress relative to the goals of the guardrails? There should be very intentional project management, performance management systems put in place. If they don't already exist, then they, then they need to happen. If they do already exist, then they need to be modified to make sure that what they're coordinated around is the goals and guardrails that you've just adopted. It may well be that a lot of these systems are in place, but they obviously couldn't have been aligned to the goals and guardrails before today because they didn't exist before today. But they do now, and so that becomes the work. These are the sort of things that are going to have to happen next, and they are a major huge lift. My team and I are certainly available to support with the cascading process of pushing this out. Once you've got it out to all the executive directors and the regional superintendents, then the next, it goes out to the principals. And then once it goes out to the principals, the next it goes out to the teachers. Eventually, the goals and guardrails should be a significant part of the evaluation of almost every single adult in your school system. That cascading process, if it doesn't happen, you just voted on something that doesn't actually matter. If it doesn't get socialized into the organization, it's not meaningful that it's sitting in a document in this room. It actually has to go all the way through. And so you'll probably hear about me working with your superintendent on that, but that's mostly work with the superintendent, not work with y'all. But it's important for y'all to know that it's happening. And so I share that with you because it's reasonable for you to, from time to time, ask your employee, hey, how's that cascading process going? One note on that, don't get too eager. Meaningful cascading frequently takes at least a year to make it one, maybe two levels. In a, in a normally healthy organization, you can cascade one, maybe two levels at a time. In a super high-performing organization, maybe three. But realistically, to, depending on how kind of stacked your organization is, a full cascade will take the full five-year period. So I wanted to offer that as an understanding of not only what's immediately next, but talk to you about this cascading process, which is the next big thing over the horizon for your staff after that's complete. Questions about cascading from the board, the goals and guardrails from the boardroom to the classroom? Questions about cascading?
We'll email you, AJ.
I got a long email that I'll send you as a follow-up. With that, I just want to congratulate you on taking this important next step, and I look forward to being of service. Madam Chair, back to you.
Okay, yeah, so we won't let you go yet. But thank you so much for being with us through this process, and we have appreciated your coaching, your expertise, and being a part of Long Beach, and acknowledging that we have a pretty good thing going in Long Beach, and we would all agree with you.
Do we take a picture?
Yeah. Do you want to...
Yeah, let's adjourn the special meeting, and we'll be ready at 5:00 for tonight's meeting.